I've been trying to check now. It's on the form too. Well, see, I was like, why? I said, how can you tell if you're about to be reading? Yeah. All properly.
Okay, time is on the clock. This meeting is called order. Your microphone. I will call when we're ready.
Arns, here. Williams. Clamish, here. Ely.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Hanson.
Ray.
And Michael. I think that's all we got right now.
All right, well, we still have a floor, so we can see. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the previous meetings. Do we have any guests?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda. Or do we have any additions to the agenda?
Gary, you're saying we don't have to have approve Article 5 to this meeting.
No.
We do, yes? Or what do you say? I guess we gotta.
We don't have to.
We've never done that before.
Anything, so.
I know. That's, I mean, you've got discussion on the agenda. That's all you have on the agenda is a discussion.
Right. And that's the assumption was that you were just gonna, you know, see if you were, everybody was okay with the changes from last night.
Right. No.
All right, I guess we just agree to work or move it into a calendar.
Okay. Thanks, Gary. Move approval of the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion is Gary. We have any conflict of interest declarations?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so the first item then is the election of officers. So the first thing would be to have a nomination for chair.
Nominate. This can be Schultz, chair of persons.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for chair?
Move nomination CC, that's the name.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vice chair? Any nominations for vice chair? I would like to nominate Paul Arns.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for vice chair?
Move nomination CC, that's the name.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Kevin Tyshro. I apologize if I.
Tyro.
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 Okay. I can see one. Conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a swimming pool in a moderate density rural residential district. Sub property is newly described as lot 27 of Bay Cliff Estates. Section 18, T93 North, range 56 West. Here and out here referred to as Waltham Township, County of Maine, Maine, South Dakota. Okay, I'm sorry you have to say your name again.
Kevin Tyro.
And so, oh, cool. A drum?
Yes, it is.
Um, do you have close neighbors in that realm?
I do. Brian Jensen, left way to the north. I mean, it's not my property. My pool will be about 190 feet south of the property line.
It's, yeah, like towers, little kids.
Presumably does.
Oh.
Yep. Pool's 24 feet in diameter. Actually, we probably purchased it. It's, uh, purchasing from Splash City Avenue Falls. It's, uh, substantial pool. It will have a gap around half of it. I do have 15 grandchildren myself, so it will be flying by it. Go out a gate. Thought it was there, so can be after. About health supervision.
Lots could, lots or something like that, a lot so far.
Yes, something, yeah, that's.
I'd get an email expressing that one of your neighbors would like offense. I'm glad that you already do.
Yeah.
And, uh, locked on it. I think that would be a good start. Appreciate you doing that, so.
And I'm assuming it's like 340.
Yes, interferences.
Do you have visibility of the pool from your house? Do you look out the window and you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It will be on the west side of our, off of there.
Does anyone else have any questions for him before I ask for public input?
Sounds good. I can, that's the report.
Yeah. And I also feel a little bit more mature. You can see the pool's visibility from the house. Not that it's your job to watch the 24/7 or anything like that, but it's just.
I feel like what I property is doing.
Oh, okay. Donna, did you have any questions for him?
No, I think you guys, I think you guys covered it. Everything that I questioned, you guys already have, so.
All right, thank you.
Looks like a good, good plan to me.
Absolutely. Sounds like a lot.
All right.
I just had to ask the public.
You.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular item? On the agenda? Hearing none. Time for public input is now closed. We did address the safety issues that were the concern of the one person that voiced concern. It will have a locked gate, so children can't access it. I would entertain a motion for performance. Or do you have any other questions?
Oh, no, I just think it should go through 1805.
All right.
You know, so you're looking at, well, first Article 7, conditions uses for moderate density rural R2. Swimming pools are listed as conditions used under Section 707 under 11. And then as we go through 1805, you know, notices were properly given. You know, ingress and breast isn't really an issue on this. Utilities. Now, for screening, he's already gonna put in a fence which alleviated the one concern on the aisle, which is good. I guess I don't see any issues with that.
Yeah. Great, you know, a lot of these don't apply there, so. I moved the.
All right, you have a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in your room.
All right.
Yes.
Clamish, yes. Ely, yes. Frank.
Yes.
Beverly, yes. Schultz.
Yes.
Motion here.
I've got a message from Greg. And Greg's got some storm damage too, so he might be calling later.
Oh.
Hello, hello, this is Greg, if anybody can hear me.
Hi, Greg, I just mentioned that I had talked to you and you had some storm damage.
Yeah, you were the first, you were the first on the list, so I just sent you a text. I, uh, I just got on, just came on, sorry, I'm like.
That's all right.
The house is still standing, huh?
Uh, yeah, it was questionable what was going on there for a second, but, uh, lots of, lots of trees down, lots of rain real fast, and I'm sure there's worse around than what we've got, but we had some, a lot of, road was blocked and all this other stuff, so, yeah, it was pretty bad right there for a second.
We are now on the Markstrom item of Vincent Black. Applicant is requesting a variance of the minimum lot requirement in the agriculture district from 20 acres to 10.7 plus or minus acres and a variance for the minimum lot width from 500 to 339.64 feet on the south and 342.50 on the north. Said property is newly described as proposed tract 1, East Oak addition in the south half of government lot 1 in the southwest quarter of Section 18, T95 North, reach by West. Here and out here referred to as Walshtown Township, County of Maine, State of.
One Trump.
Thank you. All right.
I guess that's, that's hard.
It sounds like the big thing is they finance it.
Yeah.
So they won't, because you own, how many acres do you own?
Yeah, there's, uh, roughly 70, 75 or their total, but yeah. The pasture and then the farm is right.
What, when you run on that whole thing, you're basically living there.
They want, well, you have to try to get it down under, well, to the 10 acres anyway, so that.
I'm, I'm a second.
Yes. Yeah.
And so the buildings are all going to be on that lot?
Yeah, it's just a house.
They're all within that, okay.
Yeah. Okay, or shit, something like that.
Sometimes it's recycling, you know, the farms there, and then you gotta make sure that the trees in that.
Yeah. No, that was an open field.
That's what we're asking.
Separate field up on its own. I don't like that way also. Try to separate it from the farm rather. Down the road issue also, but mainly the biggest issue really is just to try to get a better. Everything's crazy anymore, so.
Actually, one of the bigger areas is we looked at, most of them are around two acres.
Yeah, I.
Part of the.
I have things to think about. If this third, so. That's corporate kind of deal.
I did have one person contact me, not in a subdivision, I'm not sure. But somebody was concerned that we're gonna put in a subdivision and we think that was the issue.
No.
And, but.
I was just like, maybe I'll go there and finally get up. Try to deal with the water, try to get the survey and done, and we're able to get that accomplishment, so now we're just.
That's a lot to lose, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Where is actually that party that, yeah? There's some part of the ground on the east side of the. Uh, where I'm at is a very, yeah. Dan was right there on the other side. Yeah. See this? I mean, sign this on my picture or.
Uh, this is, this is a whole segment. Just you doing a little jump back there.
Um. You're the guy. Three hours. Yeah. Yeah, I've been through, through the five. Oh, yeah, hell, there's no.
Do you have any other questions to make before I ask for public input? Donna, did you have any questions before I ask for public input?
No, I do not.
All right. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item? Hearing none. The time for public input is now closed. Should we have a motion from the board?
Oh.
All right, you have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The only thing I'll bring up, I don't have any issues. I've always done these things before in the past this week. I go.
I haven't.
I don't know how that works, to be honest with. I'm in the thing.
It's, it's basically gonna be flat at 10 acres.
Right.
So, and he's doing that. He's trying to, oh, as much.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm thinking in the past. We're thinking of, but I know he can't sell that.
I think that's more when you're doing, like, something that's really small. We've done that with, with flats that were like under, like way under the required amount, like in rural residential and stuff, and they're trying to. And they were old lots that were before zoning and stuff. We've done that, but on a big parcel, I mean. It has to separate it to get the financing.
Right, that's right. Well, where I think we've done, we've let, you know, said, okay, flat off.
We, we did, I think that one, one of them. It was a word I'm thinking.
But anyway, yeah, you flat off the 10, which makes sense, but then you essentially tie it up. Okay. When I always talk about that, oh, you know, I, there's been so many different things I can't. But basically, there was. They will, they will not finance it. Before it all came down to this. Somebody we talked to about doing that. So I asked the banker about that and said, no, they don't have.
Is that something like.
I think at least the term is paid off.
Well, that's why.
Once it's paid off, then you could probably vacate it, turn it back into one of this.
Well, I wonder now if you remember what the, I don't think. What the term was.
Yeah.
It has to be separable.
Yes.
And I, I think when, when.
I don't remember this term.
By separable, it means that you can call it a loan that you take.
Yeah.
If it's tied to the piece, then, then it gets very complicated, though. They have to try to sell the whole thing, and then they have to try to pay you back. So they don't wanna do it. That's why they're telling you to do it.
Yeah, there was another term that they used. Wanted me to talk to the bank about it, so.
You know, it's just the reality of financing. Small and smaller sizes, and you can't. But you have, you know, just went right in the outside. You know, I just could see both sides.
Hey, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion. There's nobody else.
Oh, you guys are there.
Oh, uh, this is Greg. Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, I have a terrible time hearing everybody, but is the applicant retain ownership of the rest of the parcel there?
Yes. You know, 75 acres around it.
Is there, is there any, again, I apologize, I, I might have missed this, so I can't really hear it all, but is there, uh, we've tied, we tried to tie these together before. I think there was one other applicant tried to, wanted to do this, and we had 20 acres and wanted to break off a two acre piece, and we asked them to tie them together, or not, uh, how do we, you remember how we did that? Keep them tied together for resale purposes?
I, I think that, um, that was a different case. Um, he's having difficulty getting financing, and he, he can't get a bank loan unless this is reduced to a smaller amount. I believe the one you were talking about is where an individual was just buying vacant property. Uh, this is different because there's a house on it, and he already owns the land. But again, I know what you're saying.
Well, there was one parcel that they owned 20 acres, and they wanted to build a house, but they couldn't get financing for more than two acres, so they, they wanted to cut out a two acre piece. They owned it already, and they were gonna build a house. So, uh, that's the one I was thinking of, but either way, um.
I don't think we tied that one together. The one I remember that we tied together was the one of Dr. McKness's on, uh, on the hill. Because I know it was talked about with the She maker one, but from what I recall, we ended up not doing that because they had.
Okay.
Getting a loan that way. Because they were in the same situation. She had 80 acres and couldn't get a loan, and then plotted out 20 acres and still couldn't get a loan, and then went to two and a half acres. And that's, that's kind of the situation we have here. And if we, if we leave them tied together, my feeling is that he's gonna probably not be able to here live at home. Situation at a financial industry. You might be.
So, a bank will, a bank will loan on 10 acres, but not on 75?
A secondary market.
No, not on the secondary market, not a, a decent industry. Something you could go for. We run into this a lot, so it's.
Well, I know, we've seen a lot where they wanted two acre lots. I've never seen one so big, right? Since I've been on, so.
He's lucky.
And I, I just, we just keep hearing from the, from the agricultural community and the representatives that the 20 acres is what they wanna see. So this is the conflict, right? So.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve it. I'm just letting you know that in case you didn't hear it. Is there anything else you want to mention before we vote? Greg?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go call vote when you're ready.
Arns.
Yes.
Clamish, yes. Ely.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
All right, motion heard. All right, next item on the agenda is the Carlson Family Trust flat. Lots 1 and 2 of CC Hall, a reflet of the Weisman Tract 7, subdivision of the northwest quarter of Section 14, T93 North, range 57 West of the 5th Principal Meridian in Yankton Township.
I believe these applicants are out of state right now, so. But basically, as you can see, it was split into two lots, the homes on Lot 1, and, uh, stated, signed up at both existing approaches. Get access to the second lot also to the north and.
Move approval of the class. Clamish.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Go call vote when you're ready.
Arns.
Yes.
Clamish, yes. Ely, yes. Frank.
Yes.
Beverly. Schultz.
Yes.
And Hanson.
Yes.
Hey, did you have any administrative items for us?
There are none.
So, 7:25 PM. We had an extensive discussion of the charges.
I guess I had, I did, uh, wrote up some compliance with, uh, the changes that we did per Section 1807. And Chapter 1, it talks about protecting and guiding the physical, social, economic, and environmental development of the county and to conserve and develop natural resources. Chapter 5 deals with encouraging the uses of lots, and that, for example, farmsteads are within small communities. Uh, comprehensive plan. for example, um, far Steeds are within small communities, uh, in a comprehensive plan, and it calls for it to be a developmental priority. And moving on to chapter, um, seven, the economy, it talks about building value-added facilities in ways that minimize land use and environmental conflicts. Protect the quality of life for rural upper county residents by establishing limitations and concentrated animal feeding operations regarding maximums of it, animal set size, and involve the public in the process evaluating economic development, project impacts. Chapter eight, land use, regulate concentrated animal feeding operations and processing operations to protect environmental quality and noise conflicts. That's in our conference. So Gary, what you recommend, maybe that we, if we agree with the, I see there's a, the, the blues are the corrections you did from last night, correct? So if we agree on this, I guess what's the force of action that we recommend?
So wait for you guys, are you ready to move it to notice it for the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I guess I, I would kinda like to, you know, sooner, you know, try to get public comment this month.
Dennis.
Ask the grand women's.
Dennis expressed that he would like to wait this, this storm that they were gone.
Well, I mean, we've been working on this for a year and a half, and I, 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 and this is my personal feeling, is that we gotta get public input on this, and I, I, if we wait another month, then it's gonna be another month, so I guess I would be in favor of moving this forward and getting some public comment yet this month, and see what the citizens have to say on it, and it might change what we have here, and I feel the time to get input, um, you know, we, we need to do that, so I guess I'd be in favor of moving this forward.
Yeah, I would like to move it forward as well. We discussed doing that last night.
I'm doing it. Explain the process.
Gary, you wanna, you wanna cover that?
Well, it basically happens, if, once you decide to move something forward, you try and recommend to the county commission, we have to notice for ten days before the meeting, and then, then it can actually be voted on as, for a recommendation to the county commission. And so then it has to, then it has to give, after that recommendation has to be noticed again for a first and second reading at the county commission. Advertised for a couple weeks after that, and then twenty days after that, it goes into effect if not preferred.
Now, is this ever?
That has not been voted, just that works, working sessions today, so it's never been officially noticed to be taken or voted.
So vote tonight would be. What we're voting on is if we should vote on this. So if we vote on this on the next, the night, the next meeting, we would vote.
Next meeting, we can have public.
Public, plus, and that would be.
The next meeting would be a public hearing, and then a vote, official vote, send it on to the commission.
Okay, my question is, okay, if we do that to this tonight, how could, how can the public get their hands on this?
It's in the bag, and just like every other meeting.
Okay.
And, and really, when, when there's here, who's in the paper, that's the time where, you know, they'll know to look at that.
And that's really. We don't mind that, right, Gary?
Correct.
I would just blame them.
No. There are good questions.
Questions, I'm glad to share.
Chair, quick, something jumped out. I don't know if I'm crazy or not, but, uh, putting in uses of residential swimming pools. Does anyone have an issue with putting the word residential into another definition of swimming pool?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Well, it's in the.
Yeah, I thought we changed, decided to not do that last night, because we were putting it with the other one, is what my memory was.
Yeah.
We talked about that first, and then it changed, and we went back to just putting it in the, in the conditional use.
Okay, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Can I make one small thing then? If we do it that way, then it reads swimming pools, town or residential. Under section five oh five.
I have a senior issue with that.
Yeah, I think, I think residential needs to be there.
Sure.
Yeah, I love, I would put swimming pools, town or residential.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with.
So what?
Yeah, that sounds.
Or pull that way, I don't know.
Northwest makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Because I think they all feel like it's signs, it's always signs, and then.
Yeah, why is it with soccer, living in this one pool?
I think that's a good thing.
I'll make that change. Do we have to go, or we can just have a consensus and move forward? Consensus should be, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Right, well, put it on the July meeting notice. Well, I, I, I guess I would like to have it sooner than that. Meeting at this month. I would be in favor of, of getting public input sooner.
Let, let's give them a month to a regular meeting. That's my thought. Give everybody some time to look at it.
Let's get it online so they can see it. I agree with Greg.
Yeah, I, I really think this is a perception, this is where we get into the perception issues, if we're trying to push it too fast, just look, we gotta, we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of working sessions, the people that are concerned about it have already started to hear about it, talk about it, let's give them a full month to look at it and, and do it at a regular scheduled meeting. That's my thought. Thank you.
I would tend to agree. I think, you know, we, we have put a lot of work into this. My wife wants to know, I've been working three hours meetings for a half.
We need that energy as another one.
Tell, tell her, uh, to come and have some fun.
That's what I did. No, she wants to come to God's question, that's what she wants to do. But anyway, I think, I think we should take, give them a month, because we know there's gonna be input on here. We know, because I was talking to a couple guys today, and they, they said, how did you get on there? I swatted it, so I put in an application. And then my question, what do you think? I said, they said, well, their basic thing was, they wanna have time to look at things. And I looked at them, like, because I know how they both feel, I said, yeah, but we can't please everyone. Do you realize that? Well, yeah, so. And one of them was on the country, goes, well, there's a. That's why I think we should give them a full month.
My fourth team, it is. I'll have this opportunity, and I, I, nobody probably wants to hear this, but I think you all wanna just take a break for a while, or, or, uh, um, you know, there's, last night there was mention of working on the comp plan, um, accessory structure sizes, you know, things to that, and make sure, I suppose if I just wanna take a break. Get, get what we've worked on.
Well, I thought that, that, um, um. He, he heard about it with the, the comp plan before he.
Pat? Pat?
No, 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 no. Um, his brother has a sewage service, I can't say his name. John.
I don't really have a touch, I don't really have a touch to confirm.
Well, I thought he did. I thought he was writing on the document.
No, I'm talking about, you know, Dennis Michael Brown at the point last night, just, you know, at some point, you gotta work at the comp plan. Just throwing ideas out there. I guess I feel we should probably put in a line work, see where this goes.
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, he worked on that comp plan for about two years, so. So I think, I think if we go back to the.
Excuse me. Who and how are the, whoever goes, goes see that, see these to review them before the next meeting?
Online.
Online?
Online.
Or does not everybody has that address?
They'll read, aren't they available in your office as well?
Sure.
Auditor's office?
They can always request a copy from the auditors or from, from our office.
Do they know they have that, that availability, or?
It's in the, you're in notice, isn't it?
It's always in the notice, but, but, um, we can certainly, the notice for the paper that, that goes out to the ten day notice. So at least ten days before, they can always, they can always come and know that they can do that. We felt we needed to do a press release before that. We certainly could do that, too.
Just wait on our, our paper.
I mean, there's no reason we could, we couldn't notice it now for the July fourteenth meeting, or, or within the next week, and have it available, being available last month.
There's a copy they're gonna, you know, I, I'll be honest, when you have these copies, you've got the old stuff there and the new stuff there, it is very.
But it's gotta, we have to show them.
They have to show what's changed. Yeah.
Otherwise, everybody would say, I can't tell you what's changed.
But yeah, it's hard.
The fall. With the old stuff, the purple color. That's what I do. I mean, so you, you can see the difference, but it's all wrapped. You guys, there's a line for it.
When you were a teacher.
I did, it's a lot.
I'm my student.
And then, your favorite.
I know.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe I, I mean, I can certainly.
I'm, I'm.
Probably do something else.
Same difference between the proposed and the old.
But it's three things.
This is just meat, so.
It's the original, and the, and then the proposed.
You know, I, I know it's tough to, to see how, how it is, um, but the way Gary has presented it is, is probably the best way that, that there is with, with the red and I, he makes a lot of sense of the, the original, um, what we're deleting and what we're proposing, and I guess, you know, he's got thirty years' experience in zoning, I'm gonna.
I just, I don't, I just need.
He's saying, yeah, no, I don't disagree.
Highlighter out there.
But generally, changes, generally, there's not this many changes in things, and they're more spread out. So it's a lot easier to deal with.
We appreciate all your hard work, and getting this done last minute, and I really do appreciate.
I think that, yes, thank you very much, Greg. I was just gonna say, I think maybe one thing that. I know you put the blue to show those layers around, but when it published, you know, you can get rid of the highlight, just so it's all.
Yes.
All the same, yeah, then it, that'll help.
Yeah, in that way, I agree.
Okay, is there anyone out there for public comment? I don't see anyone in the gallery, so I'm assuming there is.
There are none.
All right, cool. So, the agenda is exhausted. Do I have any motion?
So moved.
All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This is the first meeting.